This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
I'd like to call the November 14, 2019 meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30-4:05. Our first item on our agenda is Ms. Rebecca Carr, our North Haven High School Councilor Coordinator, and Anthony Mastriano, a school counselor from North Haven High School, will present about counseling and college prep.
Hello, and thank you for the welcome. Again, I'm Rebecca Carr, the coordinator for a school counseling program, and this is Anthony Mastriano, a school counselor in the high school. And we're proud to be here to be able to give you an overview of our college counseling component of the comprehensive school counseling program. It's okay for me. So, we'd like to start by giving you an overview of the counseling program in general, and then get into the college counseling piece. Please ask any questions as you go along, or if you'd like further detail on something. If I move too fast over it, that's okay. Just ask me, and I'll give you some more detail. The school counseling program for North Haven has been recognized by the Connecticut Counseling Association as an outstanding school counseling program. It's composed of these four components: individual planning, curriculum delivery, responsive services, and collaboration. When most people think of... Hold on a second. When most people think of school counseling, they think of responsive services. That's the counseling or the case management portion of the career. But tonight, we're talking about college counseling, which primarily falls under the curriculum delivery component. When you break down the college counseling even further, we want to make sure that we're addressing each of these elements: identifying our approach, educating students about the process, educating parents about the process, connecting students to college representatives, providing support and guidance through the process to completion, and then communicating information to families and students. We have planfully addressed each of these components in our program. Not breaking each of those down, we'll go through some of the details. Our approach is one of education. Foundational information, building incrementally through the years in high school. We want to educate students and parents, like I said, and also provide them support through the process. Some students are plug-and-play. They're ready to go. They come in, and they have figured it out and done it all on their own. Other students need a little bit more one-on-one or more hands-on, which we provide for them. Our program is aligned with state and national standards and best practices in school counseling. So, though we meet with juniors, sophomores and freshmen, sorry, leading up to junior year, the college search really gets going in the junior year, which is where I start. We meet with juniors for an activity where we help them with a college search, and they leave with a list of schools to begin researching. During this activity, we also discuss the entire college search and application process, deadlines, some of the terminology, what the entire outlook is, so they know where they're headed. We follow up this activity with individual meetings, so that we can meet the needs of each student, because they are different, and some of our students are not going off to college. So, we want to make sure that we're helping them meet their post-secondary goals as well. In the springtime, we meet with junior parents. This is relatively new. In the past few years, we've implemented this component where we invite parents to come in one-on-one, and we meet with them to discuss their own children's needs, their own questions, and create their next steps for their family going into the spring. Then, we circle back around in May and look at students' lists of schools that they have started to look at or considering applying to, because we want to make sure they're appropriate. What we don't want is someone to apply to all reach schools and then have a problem when it comes to admissions time. We also, in this meeting, talk about the next steps over the summer. So, when they come in in September, if they're going through and completing everything that we're asking, they'll be ready to go to alleviate some stress that comes normally with senior year. When senior year comes, we meet with students again for another activity where we walk them through completing the college application. We actually have them sit with us, open their Chromebooks, get into their Common Application Account. Some students need us to help them create an account, which we do. Some already have their account created over the summer. And we walk them through the entire application. And then, we also get them in their Naviance accounts and show them how to request recommendations from teachers as well as how to request transcripts from our office. Throughout the fall, we have individual meetings with seniors to help them. Again, like I said, some need more help than others, and so we make sure that we're available to do that. We also have implemented a daily college application clinic during Second Block. Any senior who needs help with anything related to college process, if they can't get into their College Board account, they don't know what something means on the Common Application, their college doesn't take the Common Application, all sorts of issues come up, and students can just drop in during that time and get help from one of our counselors that is in there during Second Block. Students can make appointments at any time to see us: before school, after school, during a study hall. That's not the only time, but we make it so that it's available in an easy, accessible manner. We also have Gateway Decision Day, which comes up in April. We have the admissions person from Gateway come in in April, and we have worked with all of our students to get them registered for Gateway, so that part is done for them, and they're ready to go in the fall.
Gateway, remember?
Gateway Community College, yep.
Why specifically you?
A lot of our students indicate that they're interested in Gateway. And what we found in the past is some of those students have a hard time following up with the actual application. So, we were working one-on-one with them, sitting down, having them do it online. And the person at Gateway offered to come in a few years ago, and said, "Why don't I come in with you? I'll meet your students." This was just a nice outreach. And so, we gather those students, it's usually about 20 together, and we walk them through filling it out, submitting their fee, and they're done and ready to go. Some of those students in the past have had a hard time completing that process. So, if they want to go somewhere else, we help them with that, too.
Well, my next question was: what if somebody from a different university called you and said, "Hey, I'd like to come in"?
We would do that as well. We've had post-university and University of New Haven in the past. Alberta has shown an interest to do that as well this year.
My question is, on a senior parents seminar, why do we wait to let seniors talk about how to pay for college?
Okay, I'll get that. So, the parent education piece. We offer four nights a year. I didn't put our freshman night on there, because that relates more to the high school transition. So, sophomore year, we offer a college search evening. Our counselors walk through how to actually conduct a college search and define what each component, what you should be looking for with large school, small school, what the differences are between certain things. Our junior night, we have an admissions rep... I'm gonna get there to your question. Our admissions rep, this year she's from Quinipia, comes in and talks about the college search application process and provides an insider's viewpoint of how admissions works. She talks a lot about what a good essay looks like, how the selection process works, the timelines for things. And she's a good resource and answers questions for parents as well. So, seniors, we have a parent night for financial aid night. Our speaker, he's very well-known in our circles and counseling directors around the state. Enjoy having him. He's tough to get. He's high-energy and provides information about the financial aid process, the financial aid applications, loans, and what award paperwork looks like when people receive them. And we have it broken down by year. This was a request from a prior superintendent to offer one specifically for each grade. It also is put in there for developmental purposes, where it's offering small bits of information at the right times so as not to have to digest it all at once. We advertise it to everyone to come. We had the highest numbers of people attend that this year of all different grades. So, though we say senior, we do advertise it to all. We say all grades are welcome when we advertise it, and we send a text message and email reminders.
Yeah, I still think it should be done before senior year for those parents who maybe can't come.
Yeah, it's offered. Anyone can come. It's in our auditorium on a particular date in October at 6:30.
Yeah, I'm aware.
So, when we're trying to put students together with college representatives, we have about 100 this year coming. Representatives come, they come to the Student Services Center. I have a counselor sit with each college rep and the students to ask questions, so that they have a substantive experience and to guide conversation. Sometimes, the students are a little shy. What's great about these meetings is the individual who comes to visit our school generally is the person who is reading our students' applications and making admissions decisions. So, it helps foster that relationship. And there are times where the representatives will say to me, "Oh, I remember your student from last year. They ended up coming. It was nice that I met them here and then with their application." College fairs, we collaborate with three in the area. There's two at the Worthington Athletic Center on Choates Campus and one at Oakdale. They contact me every year and ask us to heavily promote their college fairs to our students. And we had a few students attend this year.
Do you also... I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
You didn't.
Do you also publish or let the students know about the open houses in the area?
Yes, there's very many of them. So, I don't push them all out. I certainly can. I don't want to gear students towards particular colleges or just state schools. So, we do get information on lots of open houses around the country. So, there's hundreds of them. So, we'd have to come to a consensus of which ones we want to share. You know, want to make sure that it's out there. But we do tell students, when they're looking at schools and they list them in their Naviance accounts, they will get alerts about the open houses from the schools that they've indicated they're interested in, directly from the colleges.
And Mr. Mastriano is going to...
So, in addition to the post-high school planning piece of it, we provide a lot of support and guidance to not only the students, but also the families. It's been very helpful now that Mr. Frazier has been added onto our counseling staff, which has given us much more opportunity to work more individually with juniors and along with their families as well within the past few years. So, we are very thankful for that. As a piece of it, we do create a guidebook, which goes through a detailed admissions process and a college search. We also meet in small junior groups, and we will sit down, review what a search looks like, how to actually conduct a search within Naviance, and allow students to come up with a comprehensive list that then they can follow up with the counselor and/or their family after they're done a little bit more research on their own. We also provide a guidebook for the senior year piece of it, the how-to, step-by-step component piece. And it actually breaks everything down, step by step, of how to apply to any school. Obviously, this is just a resource. We're there as the primary resource, but it's more or less kind of their go-to guide. We also provide students with college fair and campus visit checklist, which is just another helpful tool, so that when you do go to a college fair, it can be a little overwhelming, and you walk into a room and you see over 100 schools. How do I narrow this down, and what questions do I ask? Or when I go onto a campus, what do I ask? Or what should I look for? That would be the right fit for me. And then, the last piece of it is, we do spend a decent amount of time on the financial aid piece of it. Again, it's a little more difficult to be able to sit down hand-in-hand with some of the students with the FAFSA component, because that's based off of the parents' financial components. But we do provide as many resources to students and families as possible.
Are the guidebooks that you mentioned, 0.1 and 2, are they written by North Haven counselors?
Yes, yes, they are. And they're posted on our website as well.
They were formulated...
Ms. Carr, I'm sorry.
It's okay. They were formulated a few years ago, and they continue to change. But they were formulated in collaboration with Cheshire's director.
And then, just a few more things that we also offer for students are Google Classroom. The beauty of Google Classroom now is we can post and push out so many wonderful opportunities for students to keep up to date. Again, we have the daily college application clinic. I love that, honestly, on Fridays. So, when students want to come in on a Friday during Second Block, we just sit down. Sometimes, I have students that need help with the entire application. Or, as Ms. Carr said earlier, "How do I just get into my Naviance account?" Or, "How do I send my SAT scores?" So, it alleviates some of the anxiety. And I also offer, you know, parents to come in at any time as well in addition to this application clinic time. We do continue to consult with students and families. We follow up. So, we've hit the major November 1 deadline, and we're almost at November 15. So, we had quite a push of applications already being completed, excuse me, and submitted. Now, it's our responsibility as counselors that will follow up with the students who haven't taken the initiative to continue with the process and reach out to them, and also reach out to their family as well to see what can we do to support them even further. At the beginning of this school year and most of our time within, I would say until January, about 47% of our direct contact with students is based on the post-high school planning piece of it. So, there is a great deal of time that's spent specifically working on the applications and providing students the needs that they need to be successful in moving forward. We also are trying to greatly enhance our communication thanks to a lot of feedback from the community, from the board, from the Ed Foundation in regards to the things that are happening within our department. So, this year, we have really built on sending out more text messages, having emails as well that are sent out more frequent. I know within the last few months, we had about eight messages sent out, so that parents don't forget about filling out the FAFSA that opened up today, or don't forget November 1 is coming up, or there's also a college fair that's coming in the community. We have a quarterly newsletter, which provides more detail and information. We have a comprehensive webpage. Again, we have our Google Classroom. The in-school announcements have been wonderful this year with the add-on of the, I don't know, the true technology. It's the televisions, I call them, outside in the hallway. And that's been fantastic, because we've hosted all of the colleges that are coming each week, and we keep that up to date, and it's very regular. We've had a great turnout, I would say, with the promotion of that and also announcing over the speaker every Friday the different list of schools. So, we're having a fantastic opportunity with that, and more and more students are taking advantage of it. And this is just to give you an idea of, more or less, what the counseling department is working on throughout the year. So, as you can see, the college process is just one little dot on all of the incredible work that we're able to do, because we are, we have a wonderful staff, and we're able to balance everything. And it's not just the career piece and the resume, but we're also focusing a lot of energy and time within the mental health support as well and any of the sports that the students and families need in the community.
I saw you have scholarship management there.
Yes.
What part of the college process, as well as, I'm gonna put, the trade school process?
Yes.
I'd like to talk to you about that, too.
Please.
When do you start with the scholarship management? Because sometimes, I don't think the students know or they don't apply for what they're eligible for.
Exactly. So, typically, how I do it, and I know how our department usually does, is around January time, after applications have been submitted, we have students really start digging and looking at all the scholarships. If there's any private scholarships within the community or anything that's on FastWeb.net, we ask students to really start searching and looking at that. They do get that information at the beginning of the school year, and even at the end of junior year, we add that in our junior booklet. That will also provide them more information so that they can use the summertime between junior and senior years to start looking and getting more of an idea.
And in our newsletters as well.
Okay, so the scholarships that we have on hand...
Sure.
Are they filled every year? Are they used? Every scholarship is given at least to someone?
To my knowledge, yes. Especially the PTSA scholarships. Ms. Carr, if you want to speak a little bit more to that?
So, our scholarships are contained in Naviance. It has a little portal for scholarships. Students can log in and see exactly what comes in locally to our office. We keep a hard copy in our office, too, for those who want to sit and flip through. And students do apply to it. I don't have feedback necessarily, which students have received those awards. Some do communicate, but not every single one. But we do have students applying to all of them. And then, the large collection of PTSA scholarships are all given out.
Those are definitely given out this spring. Does that answer that question you said?
I have literally two questions.
Yes, please, Doc.
In a perfect world, it'd almost be 25, 25, 25, 25% of your day. But in reality, how much time, just in an average day, do responsive services take of your time?
I would say, for me personally, in my caseload, I could speak to it, a majority of it. So, it can be a little difficult trying to find ways to getting all of these other pieces into place. But we find a way to do it. But at the same time, a lot of it is that crisis management and the mental health management as well.
Here's my second question.
Please.
How much in the time during the week are you pulled for non-counseling issues? Just general, sitting in, in meetings?
Hard to give an exact number, but many times. It's all part of the juggling.
Yes. I would say today, just alone, I got pulled four times because there was a crisis that came up. I had an upset student. I had a parent that showed up in the main office without an appointment, and one of the administrators needed me immediately to deal with an issue that was kind of going on.
That's very helpful to...
I have a question. I don't know if you've commented already if I came here, but do you track where the colleges that students actually go to?
We do.
Yeah, we do.
Yes. We have a handout, actually. That could be helpful.
I brought with me...
Lights on, everybody.
I brought with me, it's a copy of our school profile, and the last page has a list of where our students were accepted last year. And then, I also brought copies of our newsletters. Just three of them. There's more, but I like these the best, so I brought them. And there's lots of information. These email tone quarterly to families. This month, this quarter's topic was a lot on financial aid, because it's timing.
I think we asked this before, and I think I know the answer. But did we ever reach out to our graduates and ask them to reflect on the services that they receive from our counseling office? And what worked, what didn't work? What would they like to see that we didn't offer?
So, every day, we have something called Senior Survey. And we have students going to those surveys we've created to obtain information just on that exact thing, how we do meet with the council. I've this many times, there's a bunch of questions that we ask for feedback. We also do a parent survey through our newsletter. There's a little link, and parents can give us feedback as well. So, we do. We don't reach out necessarily to students while they're in college. I know second-year retention rates and four-year graduation rates are of concern for higher education. You know, we talk about this a lot in our department, about reasons why students might leave college or change schools. The consensus when we speak anecdotally to students here, their whom-to-pollish for transfer information, it's usually financial or interpersonal issues are really the reason. Not necessarily something that was a misstep in the search process. Is that the answer?
No, so that's interesting, because I wasn't even thinking about the retention. What I was thinking about was, I feel like, so Olivia's a freshman, and there's a lot of things that she didn't know she didn't know until she got into school. So, while they reflect in May, they don't really have that college experience until they're in it. So, I just wonder, once they're in there, do they think, "Oh, I was really prepared in my math classes..." I'm making this up.
Yeah, academically prepared.
But not in my English classes. Prepared in my English, but not in my science. So, I...
Yeah, I mean, it's useful information. If there was a mechanism to reach... I know students change their email address if they no longer using the North Haven email. The communication is different. You know, I think our English department chair and math department chairperson would like to know that information, too.
That's what I thought the reason was, is they didn't have the active email anymore.
To go along with what Mandy is saying, is there any way that we get a handle on students, especially that probably go to local state schools or universities or Gateway Tech? How many have to take remedial classes in English or have to take an English boot camp?
We don't have that information, but it would be interesting to know. Yeah. I know, I don't have any numbers, but I know Tracy Romberg, kind of our math department, implemented math, the math program. It's Gateway's program for our seniors who would be remediated.
Correct.
So that they would take it with us prior to graduating, so they'd be prepared for the next one.
So, they don't have to take the remedial.
That's fantastic, good add-on.
So, the list, is this schools they were accepted to?
Accepted to.
Okay, what about where they actually decided to go to?
I do have that. I can get that to you.
Okay, but you keep that?
I do.
You collect it? Okay, because that's an important information.
We have years and years of that data. It's easily accessible through Naviance. They've made it really easy.
Okay, good.
I'd be interested to see that, too.
Where they chose to accept.
Where students are choosing to go.
It's also on the wall every spring. As students get accepted, it's always on the wall, and everybody has their little thing when they come in.
That's nice.
And we'll be happy to get that, too.
Is that where you're standing up there?
Yeah.
Also, sometime, when you have time, you could just put together for us what happens to the students that choose not to go to college. What are those steps? Whether they go to the military?
Sure.
Whether they take a gap year? I kind of wanted to give a handle on that, too.
Sure.
College gets higher and higher, and by more people are looking for people in the trades.
That's right.
I think we're seeing a lot more students looking to go to the academy.
You can see the school profile. It'll show... You can see the percentages of... But in terms of the process, we can certainly get a idea.
Yes, the trade increase. I think students and families, because it's a family decision. A college decision is a family decision at the end of the day. That many students are seeking alternate options because of the financial component. And/or they'd like being in our community, where I have so many students that go away, and they actually come back. And most of the time, it is because they miss being part of the community here.
Most of that work is done individually with students, because it's so individual. Work with recruiters and even done...
Thank you very much.
Appreciate having time.
Glad to have you anytime. Thanks. If you have any questions, pop up, send an email them to me or call me.
Thank you. Can I say something before the... It's obvious, so much of what you do is behind closed doors, the working with students and students in the crisis. I'm gonna say, I think we all very much appreciate all your efforts that you do year after year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, Professor.
Thank you again. Okay, moving on. Regarding our consent agenda, we all got that very big package in the mail the other day. Hand-delivered. Hand-delivered.
Hand-delivered.
We will talk about two-sided copies. I know I wasn't the only one thinking of that. Got a very big one, did everyone take, have a minute to take a look at the October 10th meeting? Okay. May have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion passes.
Zoe.
Hi. So, they actually mentioned, one of my points is, for the juniors in school art, their junior future planning meeting just started, that date just went through. We have the first round of auditions for the musical Phantom that started this week, and the last day is tomorrow. The show days for those will be the February 27th, 28th, 29th, and then March 1st, oh, not 29th, it's a leap year, 27th, 28th, and March 1st. We had a club fair that just happened, organized by Girl Up Club with all of the, all of clubs that were interested. We all lined up in the hallways for the CAF, during all lunchways, we advertised our clubs, we hand out some candy, some lean, it's great. The National Honor Society meeting is today, we have a group initiative to make Thanksgiving, a Thanksgiving basket for family in need that wouldn't be able to provide their own things for Thanksgiving coming up. We're also looking forward to the toy drive coming up in December. And for seniors, we have the senior to senior breakfast coming up on December 3rd. We weren't able to get a sign on the town green because of reservations, but every senior was given the invitation for that, and I also just went out today before the meeting to go to local businesses for sponsors, to get raffle tickets, raffle tickets and gift cards and things like that. The senior girls Nike Bowl game is November 25th coming up, we have practices right now, it's coming up real soon. And then, last but not least, our, for seniors, we have the poinsettia fundraiser for the Christmas days, for holidays, for flowers, and if you would like, if you're interested in buying a poinsettia, you know, you can come to me, it's right here. And, yes, so that's.
I might suggest when a senior to senior, advertise it on the community page. We have the North Haven community page, I think they would be really open to advertising that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know the person's first name, but the last name is Giordano, who runs it.
Okay.
I can't recall the first name.
I forget, I might have talked about this last month, but Almost Made, the play?
Yes.
Was wonderful. It was, you know, it was mostly very heavy-duty, like Larry Project or Frankenstein, and this was a romantic comedy, and it was just so enjoyable.
Right, I didn't get a chance to go, but I heard it was great.
It was fantastic.
It reminded me a little of the HBO series Modern Love. It was, it was very, very.
Okay. Myself, a couple of things that you hit on with the senior to senior breakfast, I also want to, was going to bring up the senior poinsettia, and then one else, the cooking class, I know I'm saying it wrong, what do they call it?
Culinary.
Culinary, thank you. The culinary students will be taking waters for breads and cookies and things like that for the holiday for Thanksgiving. Anyone who's interested in that, I got something from Tracy on my email the other day, so that's something that's going to be happening. Also want to say, I don't think we brought, it was the trivia contest was after, the trivia was after our last board meeting. We're proud to say, Dot, Mr. Sturk, Mr. Sturk's wife Tara, and myself, we are the champions. So we won the first annual, or semi-annual education foundation trivia contest, and just want to shout out again to the Education Foundation for what they're doing, it's just phenomenal, Joe's not here to talk about it.
So who was the biggest contributor to the actual?
Anyone who knew modern pop culture.
No sports.
Sports.
We won because you knew the sports.
Well, we also had North Haven geography, yeah, pretty good, we got, we got the elevation of North Haven, I don't know if anybody else got that, so.
I don't know, I was giving for pop culture Beyonce for everything.
Same for everything.
So that was great, it was a great way to bring the community together.
I also just forgot to mention, there's a Wounded Warriors concert next Wednesday, some of the bands will be playing in One Voice, which I mean, will be singing as well to honor veterans who.
Would that be here?
It'll be at the.
High school, the one at the high school.
So I'll mention that.
Okay. That's another good one to have, those are also good things to talk to the women in the community page, to see if those are the things that, if she could post those, you know, I don't know what, as an administrator, I don't know what her requirements are, but I can't see where something like that would.
I think I'll look into it.
I think that's really all I had tonight for tonight's meeting. Is there any unfinished business? Okay, any new business, that's not on our agenda. Moving right along, we'll go to the reports of the Standing Committee, you're going to talk about the professional day, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Reports of the Standing Committee, Dot, ACES?
Sure, ACES met today, we're spending time, because they have a design plan, which is talking about capacity building, knowledge management systems, communication, project management systems. And they, but they're still very committed to helping us save money. I threw the House of Collaborative and Special Ed Transportation, and they're always investigating how they can also help districts, you know, paraprofessional training, translating service, translator services. So, but the big thing is, every November, I get to give, this year, Jennifer, the, if you haven't gotten it already, the tuition rates for next year. So, Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy budgeting.
Yeah, happy budgeting.
Did you notice how small the font they put it in?
Yeah.
Exactly.
But I appreciate the fact that they do that so early in November, because it helps our districts plan, and they break it down by school, so, and some of the sales and programs are very expensive, so it helps. I think it's a help to you.
It is, thank you. Okay, curriculum reduction and planning?
We met on the 7th. We started off by discussing a new textbook, grade eight textbook, a digital and print resource titled American Journey, The Early Years, published by Pearson, and we recommend that for adoption. It includes an app that's accessible without Wi-Fi, contains read-aloud features, and a translation feature, it has interactive timelines, and includes a place for students to journal. Then Melinda presented us with a number of things for information and discussion, including a North Haven High School unit plan template, which would serve to uniform planning, and a new tool to facilitate classroom walkthroughs, to organize and focus what participants will consider with regard to what's taking place in the classroom. It's an informal walkthrough guide intended to inspire conversations about the walkthrough experience.
And would that be provided to teachers prior to walkthrough?
And will engage teachers as well.
Yeah. And it's designed to explore student-centered engagement and feedback, which fosters learning and encourages rigor. She also discussed a number of things that would be focused on for next year, including a focus on social and emotional learning, ongoing strategizing about how to budget with an emphasis on the K-2 population, and concerns centered around screen time, parental issues, and plans to hire more mental health professionals to accommodate what is seen as increasing anxiety levels affecting our young students. Our next meeting is scheduled for the 14th, and that's.
Do they?
Is it the 12?
I'm sorry, it was, yes, thank you.
I think it's whatever the day.
Oops.
It's right before our export event.
Okay, thank you. Finance and operation?
Finance and operation do not need. I don't know, add anything to your report in regards to the upcoming budgets. Remember budget planning right now? That's really where we are.
Middle School Building Committee, anything?
The last meeting was on the 4th, wasn't able to attend, but the, it was basically to, it was a, scheduled to be a short 15-minute meeting to go through invoices and sign off, so nothing, no follow-up business outside that was scheduled, but I didn't make, wasn't able to make that meeting. They haven't scheduled the next meeting yet.
Sure.
And we had some open items, I think, that Gary Johns owed us from when he was here. I apologize, I did not call him to follow up on those, but I will do that tomorrow for our next meeting.
Patrick, do you know if the floor's done?
Floor's done. I got the nod from the little principal.
It's done in a news.
Good.
Okay, North Haven Education Foundation, Joe's not here, but as I mentioned, they had the trivia, the adult trivia contest, and they are planning to do, and I don't have the dates, the family trivia contest night, trivia night, at, I believe, the middle school, sometime either late winter or early spring, I do know that. Okay, policy. Are we reading each, are we reading each and every one of them?
No, we're not, I can just kind of do a little summary if you'd like. So, I know your packets were ginormous this week, and I'm so very sorry, but those, one, two, five policies that were in your packets this week are meant for a first read, you know, some of you did read them in the, in the week, but you also have the month to look them over. And there's just one thing that I wanted to talk to was letter A, the policy regarding alcohol, tobacco, and the drug-free workplace. I snuck that one in, we've been focusing on the 5,000 series or the student series, this isn't the 4,000 series. And the reason being, it got snuck in is because I just received a letter from the State Board of Education and from the Commissioner in regards to Public Act 1913, which is the Clean Indoor Act, and it's changed a little bit, so it includes, so the Clean Indoor Act now includes all school property, indoors, outdoors, regardless of whether school is in session. So our policy did not reflect that, in neither the shipment policy that we're modeling or current policy, or current policies after. So I wanted to sneak that one in with those new little verbiage in there, so we could get that, get that read and move forward with that. The policy committee looked at it tonight, and we're confident with it, so we wanted to present it to you. And so these policies, like I said, will be open for a second read in December, but I do believe in the month of January, they will put policy on hold because of the budget planning time, so we may try to sneak a few more policies into the next packet, and you have some nice holiday reading, but we won't get to them till February. Okay?
Actually, just to clarify, the way the policies are structured now is just, is basically standard language, we're not changing anything, we're just reading, or do we have an opportunity to make change?
You do have an opportunity to make change in discussion, yep. I know Jen had a few things tonight.
I do have a couple of questions on it, and I wasn't sure if you wanted me to save this for the second read, or if I clarify it for the first read, and then.
We can do that tonight, so.
You bring the question, or I pose the question, you bring it back for the second read?
Sure.
All right, so, one of them was the definition of directory information and personally identifiable information, and the 5125, did you already discuss this? They overlap like a Venn diagram.
I use the exact analogy that I use.
Oh, really? Because I'm trying to figure, because so many information, for instance, student's name, address, parent's name, date and place of birth, are considered directory information, yet also personally identifiable information. So, what did you, any, I'm not sure.
So I think that the limits to directory information are outlined further down in the policy.
Right.
And they're stricter than I had originally thought when I read the definition of the two. And also, we talked about, like, the uses for directory information, how often they're being used, and I think the military can request directory information, and there's.
Unless we have a letter on file.
Right.
And we don't get a lot of third-party requests for directory information.
Okay, and so the personally identifiable information, although it may be directory information, it wouldn't be utilized in a situation that would breach confidentiality.
And my understanding of the PII difference, the personally identifiable information difference, is that it's tied to an educational record.
Right.
And the directory information is just demographic information that may be readily available to the public. There were certain things that wouldn't necessarily be readily available to.
Right, and I was kind of surprised that they were under directory information, that part. Okay, my other thing was the classification of the education records, where it's classic, the categories A through C. And it said that districts could choose to utilize that form of classification, I was wondering if our district chooses to use those classifications, or if we are foregoing that, or if there's going to be discussion on that.
There will be discussion, let me go back and review them and see where we stand with those.
Okay, I think I have, oh, my other question was, it outlines under the discipline policy, I think it's the bus company videos are on file for two weeks, but we don't talk about, or at least I couldn't find it, surveillance videos from within the school. So it says, are those two weeks also, or held longer?
They're held longer. I don't know the exact date, Lord, you know, and I think they're 30 days, but we have so, we have different systems at the elementary, middle, and high, so I'd have, I think the different elementary and the middle and high, we're going to have to check, because they're different days to tell you the truth at this point, because the system, the system at the elementary school, it's just an older system, so.
My last one is, Section 9, Policy 5131 was also discipline, I actually have two questions. One was, it said that walkouts can be, or sit-ins are punishable by suspension, does that include, are students able to plan something peaceful ahead of time with administrators?
Yes.
Okay, so that would not, without penalty?
And they have, yes.
Yep, that's what I thought. And then my last one is, what if, it mentions, it mentions different consequences, including arrest, things like that. It doesn't talk about whether or not, if it's a nonviolent, non-threatening situation where a student potentially would need to be arrested, whether or not there's a window of time for giving parents advance notice. So let's say we need to arrest a student for a certain, for something that isn't violent, but, and it is, the student isn't a flight risk, and we're able to look at it, do we want to have something in place that says that if the student is a minor, that we notify the parent?
I think it's best practice, and I think our administrators do that, but I do think it might be something that we.
Put in a policy. Put in a policy, yeah. That's all I have.
I have a question about the physical, we're seeing some collusion of students and use of exclusionary time out. Ooh, that's a rouseful. It's not about the policy, it's, once it's adopted, the training of, I mean, because it's, it's changed over time, and it's just, there'll be some training of teachers, special ed teachers, paraprofessionals, the students, administrators.
So, the staff goes, went through Handle With Care training, that was September and October, and if new staff come on board that need the training, we provide it. So that's the one training, there's also called PMT, which I'm actually going to look at to see if we might be able to switch to PMT versus Handle With Care, because PMT is more of that universal, that a lot of districts.
I've been trained in that.
PMT, yeah, like, that's what we usually, so I'm looking into seeing if we can maybe switch for the next full year, but everybody is trained that works with students that might need that type of.
Well, you know, the thinking is the de-escalation, so we don't even get to the point, yeah.
Right, and I.
But I guess my concern is, in the course, you could have the best-trained, most wonderful teacher, and they're sick for a week with the flu, and you have a series of substitute teachers that come in, and could be faced with, you know, an issue of not knowing the student, not being able to read the cues.
And I think that's where we have to rely on our, like, PBS staff, if that happens, or the administrator, or, like, if there's, like, a regular teacher that's trained, to kind of go in on that, but if, say we do have something with a teacher who is out for that long term, we would have to figure out what we would do in instances of that.
Good point. Ooh, I had one other question. I'm so sorry. I wanted to make sure with confidentiality that our student office workers would not have access. So, you know, sometimes at the high school, we employ students after school, to make sure that they don't have access to these kinds of things, disciplinary, things like that, power school.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if that was something that we would need to include, but I think that there's certain, certain times kids do have access to that, and sometimes they don't, just to make sure that.
You'd like that probably stated in the policy, then.
Or was it just a question? Or, or it could just be a question, or maybe student office worker could be, if we went with the subcategories A through C, which is sort of like information light, information deep, and maybe those folks in that capacity only have access to a certain tier, level of clearance, I guess, for lack of a better term.
Well, I heard the weather's going to get really cold, so instead of curling up with a good book, we'll curl up with good policy. PTA Council?
Sure, I have a hefty update tonight, we had quite a long meeting this month. We welcomed Monica Hatton to our group, she now has a formal spot on the PTA Council, and will be giving updates on Special needs Advisory Council moving forward. The National PTA is looking to launch the Safe and Sound Schools Program. They'll start rolling it out in February, and it covers what parents will need to know and what's being discussed in schools around safety. They're going to start with communities like Trumbull, and our PTA Council is going to keep an eye on it. The Connecticut PTA is part of what's called the Community Bag with a Giving Tag, and the North Haven Stop and Shop, you can purchase a charity bag, and they'll give you a piece of paper, and you can go online and allocate that dollar to your charity of choice. After the Board of Education updates, there were lots of questions around the Middle School Building Committee and the track, when it's going to be resurfaced, who's going to pay for the resurfacing, et cetera. I know that Mr. Sturk and I have had some discussions around this, and that there are plans in progress.
I do have something to add in my update tonight, too.
Perfect, I won't steal your thunder then. Lots of feedback also around the state of the elementary schools, I was asked to bring that back to the board and just say that, you know, there are folks who are, again, Mr. Sturk and I had a conversation about this offline, but folks who are a little concerned about the state of Ridge Road and the lack of air conditioning in buildings. The Special Needs Advisory Group, Monica talked about moving forward together with communities, with seniors and, and young folks with disabilities together, there were several efforts to collaborate with folks, including, we're very young, Jen Stewart, on the survey that went out, and I know that we talked about anxiety in Wes's update, there's a movie called Angst, which is about anxiety, that Monica was looking to have us take a look at, maybe, taking a viewership of, and she's currently looking for potential funding sources for that as well. Clintonville is doing the Look for the Good Campaign, which is being run by Mrs. Akomora, and everyone at Clintonville is talking about this. It's implemented to encourage kindness and empathy in the community, and it is a huge success. I get a lot of feedback from community members, and it's, you know, typically a mixed bag if folks are reaching out and communicating, this has been universally positive feedback, so just wanted to give her some props on that. Enrichment is up and running at a bunch of the elementary schools, and kids are loving it. There are lots of charity initiatives going on, including Alliance Club Food Drive, Trees of Hope Run McDonald's House, and there's also a ton of fundraising, so at each of the schools, they're doing things from BJ's, Stop and Shop Rewards, Box Tops have gone digital, the 5th grade folks at Clintonville have a Spiritware fundraiser going on, lots of schools are doing lime and pie, lots of cookie dough, so I guess everybody better bring their stretchy pants to Thanksgiving. cookie dough, so I guess everybody better bring their stretchy pants to Thanksgiving. At Barnes &amp; Noble on December 6th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., Mrs. Dowling, the principal at Clintonville, will be reading from 7:00 to 8:00. It's going to be, the proceeds from, partial proceeds of that night will go towards the Clintonville PTA. And, I think, that's just about it. Oh, we are looking for the board members on PTA Council, so if anyone would like to come and be chair, vice-chair, secretary, they are looking for folks to join.
Couple of questions, or requests. I hear all about fundraising, 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 fundraising. I'd like to know where the money, once they fundraise, what are they fundraising for? And I think that helps us when we're doing our budget, budgets, to say, is it, what are the PTAs fundraising for? How much does a PTA have? What are they contributing to? Are they buying curtains for the library, or are they buying Chromebooks for the office? I'm just, you know, using an example. That's number one, because it's just fundraising, fundraising, which we need, I understand that.
I can try to get, like, a better accounting of it. I know that a lot of the fundraising efforts go towards the fifth-grade field trips, though.
That'd be good for us to know that, too, especially when we come around to the time that we want to approve that fifth-grade field trip, that we know, well, last year they were able to raise this much money, and it offset that $100 bill. I know it's more than $100, so that each family only had to pay $50. Those are good things for us.
I'll take that back and see if I can include that in the next update.
Can I refer that to the administrators?
The other question I have, way back when I was president of PTA Council, way back when, does PTA Council have a mission statement?
Yes, and there are bylaws that just got approved last year as well, too.
Okay, oh, yeah, just kind of like wondering.
Can we just send it to you?
I think it's just good to have. I'm sure they're, they're, they're in, kind of with Connecticut PTA, or the local PTA, which we have some great people in, in there who were PTA members back when I was younger, who worked for State and National PTA. Marty Usher's name comes to, to mind right, right away on that. Yeah, just, just to have it.
Yeah, sure.
Because I don't get to go to the meeting, so it's nice to just have that.
Send you that?
I send more work over to them.
Well, to go way back, I was the teacher rep when you were president, and I know that one of the ongoing conversations is always, how much at the end of, say, in June, is in the budget for each of the four, because we talk about equity all the time, and some schools don't have much of a balance, and other schools have big balance. And we don't want to get into trouble, because the other thing is, the purpose is not to buy things, like equipment.
Right, that's what I was asking.
So, it's, well, in times like, they do, to enrich, they do the, bringing people in.
Experiences.
The Angst movie that Monica's speaking about, things like that.
I am able to say something. On the part of the committee, as a main role, it's one fundraiser, two fun activities. So for what is the special needs, what we're going to focus is trying to get a fun event, family engagement where they're going to learn with special education families, educators and families, while the kids are having fun.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the standing committee reports?
So, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll go to our staff communication, Mr. Sturck.
Good evening, everyone. Couple good things to share. On November 8th, Lori Venkovsky and Tracy Ronberg and I attended the 2018-2019 Awards Program in Hartford for the Commissioner's Summer Math Challenge, and these are our two awards here.
Yay!
In 2018, the North Haven Middle School was recognized for the highest participation rate at the middle school level, and for 2019, the entire district was recognized for the overall highest participating district. Now, each year, only three districts in the whole state are recognized, so for us to be recognized two years in a row is quite an accomplishment, and I can pass around the, the program. On Election Day, we held our first unconference for all staff. So, an unconference is a day where we honored our best resources, which are our teachers and our staff. They volunteered to design and facilitate their own professional development, and their own professional development for their colleagues. So, there were over 40 different sessions, from homemade pasta making, to a teacher at college make and take for elementary teachers, and some teachers participated in designing and decorating a bra to support Art Bra, a charity focused on fighting breast cancer. So, there was a, quite a different, varied sessions.
I can tell you, I'm interrupting you, the feedback that I received has been phenomenal. People, Sopia and the grocery store teachers, and they just loved that day. It was a great day for them, so I think that was a great idea.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, looking at you, Jen, saying thank you for that.
There's a lot of pictures on Facebook, and I've never seen so many happy teachers in a workshop day. They're sleeping, nobody's sleeping, they're all smiling.
A lot of the feedback I received was that teachers got to meet other teachers from other buildings, and just do an activity together, and it was, I think, a nice bonding experience for many of them, so.
Patrick, and this replaces that conference professional that was done first day of the academic year, or this is just a completely new idea?
It's just a new idea.
Completely, okay, okay.
We tend to, on a professional development day, on, on Election Day, is, is an all-day, usually building-directed or district-directed. We try to turn it over to the teachers to have some voice. As Amanda was talking about, I just want to take a minute to give an update on our track at Vannacore. So, our track is in need of extensive repairs. Originally, the track was going to be included in the middle school building project. However, the replacement of this middle school gymnasium floor was not planned for, and therefore, all the funds were utilized, so we couldn't repair the track. So, the town and the board are aware that the track is heavily utilized by both students and by townspeople. So, currently, Mr. Fried and I are examining different options and funding sources for the track. And at this point, there have been two options presented to us. Option one is to rehab the track. The current track will be scraped, removed, and disposed of existing surface. There will be repairs done to selective areas of, I don't know if I'm saying this word right, the tumulus, I looked it up today. It's the, the asphalt, the soft asphalt that they run on, it's called soft coal, I guess. The installation of a new rubber track surfacing, and it will be restripped. And then, option two is to install a completely new track, which includes the formation of the base grades, import installation of three inches of process, tying in existing drainage, installing a new edge drain, and installation of a new pole vault and long jump areas. Now, the cost difference between option one and option two is $500,000. Phil, Diana, and Lynn Sedowski from the town are in talks with companies to discuss costs, and to ensure we're choosing the proper option. This continues to be a priority for both the town and the board, and we will, I will continue to communicate how we're working on that.
Patrick, how do you, I don't remember how old the track is, and what is the average life of a track?
We've exceeded whatever it is.
Oh, right.
I mean, Phil said it's old, I mean, so it's, it's seen its, its better day, so we.
What's the possibility of another steep grant or something to help pay for it?
It's a possibility. I know Mr. Fried has been really looking through his avenues as well to see what he can pull. So, we really want to nail down if we can do the, the resurfacing, the rehab, as opposed to the, the new, because there's such a difference in price.
Is there a diff, I'm sorry, is there a difference in how long they would last?
Yes, yes. From what I gather, the, the least, the less expensive option will still give us another 20 to 30 years with the track.
Oh, okay.
So, at the high school level, we are currently looking at the, the racial breakdown of students by the math and English course level. The data indicated that there is a discrepancy with the number of minority students taking higher-level courses in both math and in English. So, some of the steps we are taking to remedy this are, we're actively recruiting students and holding conversations with their families in order to encourage them to take these higher-level classes. And the high school, which I didn't know until recently, has an open enrollment policy, where students can challenge themselves and are free to take higher-level courses if they choose to. Dr. Diallo is talking with coordinators around the leveling process to ensure, ensure students have opportunities to take courses at different levels, and we also are in the process of forming an exploratory group to look at ways to address this discrepancy. I will be continuing to work with Dr. Diallo and the board on ways to open opportunities for all students, and I will definitely keep you all updated as we work, we work with this.
Patrick, one question. Do you know, is there any additional support for students who are taking those higher-level classes? So, as you're speaking with parents, and trying to convince them to have their child enroll in the, especially minority, minority students, is there any additional support, academic support, like, you know, tutorial opportunities?
Yes, the, the teachers do stay after, and they have tutoring sessions. I do know that the teachers also help throughout the day and open blocks and whatnot to help students at all levels. In the same vein, Melinda and I are applying for a grant through Aces that will help us recruit minority teachers and staff. We attended a job fair last spring at Aces, and which was geared to attracting minority teachers, and hopefully this grant will help us, you know, really expand our efforts in this area. And in closing, some good news. Dr. Diallo and I met with two high school students who are interested in being the board's junior class representatives.
Awesome.
I do, I would like both candidates to be part of, part of the board represent, I think they'd be great representatives, so I invited them to join our December meeting. They are Lily Pollard and Gia Dewanek, I hope I said that correctly. I met them both today, they're, they're wonderful, so.
Great, thank you.
May I ask a question? When we, when Jen was probing about the, what I take as the under-representation of minority students in the higher level, I'm concerned about that, but I'm also concerned about the over-representation of minority students in, like, the L1 classes.
It's both ends of it that we need to take a look at.
Right, yeah, and I just didn't know if the, the data for the Level 1 was coincident with, you know, the law of.
It's heavier at the lower ends and lighter.
Yeah, that's what I figured, yeah.
It sounds like you have a lot of awesome things going on.
We're, we're starting. I mean, there's some things, in talking with Dr. Diallo, that he has had in place for a few years, but we're really expanding on them.
Melinda, your assistant superintendent report?
We are in the midst of report card and parent conferences at all levels. Next week will be elementary. This is the second year of our new report card, and teachers and families seem very comfortable with these new documents. The high school held conferences last week, and the middle school held them last night. We even encouraged them not to come this evening so they could rest. And then, again, on the 18th. And elementary parent conferences will be on the 20th, the 21st, and the 22nd. We'll have two evening sessions and an afternoon session. So, we try to stagger them so that we can meet all of the needs of families. As Wes mentioned, we are piling a common curriculum template and a walkthrough tool at the high school. These align directly to our strategic planning work, as well as our portrait of a graduate. And the three elements that we're focusing on in instruction are rigor, student-centered engagement, and feedback that fosters learning. We received our first set of science scores from the state. If you remember, students took the first version of the Next Generation Science Standard Summitive Assessment last spring, and that was for students in grades five, eight, and 11. So, our results are 60% of our grade-five students scored at Level 3 or above, which is gold, 56% of grade-eight students, and 41% of grade-11 students. At this time, we don't have a barometer to know how that compares to other districts in our DURB, or even the State Department, because they haven't released that information yet. Student individual reports were mailed home a couple of weeks ago, so families have that information, and as soon as we get a little bit of comparative data, we'll dig in and continue to do some more work with it. And this assessment is online, just like Sback. So, for our 11th graders, that's very different, because even SAT and PSAT are a paper and pencil test. So, we have to re-alike, you know, kind of get them accustomed again to working off the computer for their assessments. And lastly, as Wes said, social-emotional learning is a focus district-wide. Jen Stewart and I are working collaboratively around this, and we're trying to allocate some grant funds for this initiative, and work with teacher teams to think about how we want to be very thoughtful about bringing this in at all levels across the district to meet student needs. And that's all I have.
Thank you. May I ask a question? Every report card time, especially on the elementary level, I know there's EL students whose parents may not be proficient in English. Is there any assistance to them, you know, for the teachers to communicate with parents that may have trouble struggling with art terms and, and just language?
Yeah, we've offered translators if that needs to happen in the past. Normally, the EL teachers are really pretty about helping us facilitate that and making arrangements. Sometimes it has to be on a different day, just because of who will translate, but we normally do offer that, depending on the language that they speak.
Oh, sure, I mean, thank you.
Jen Stewart, can we have your?
So, I'll start with, so Melinda and I have been working about the SEL group, and our SEL group's next meeting is in, is in December. So, the last time we met was October to kind of gather information, what is currently going on in the district. So, this next meeting is to kind of review our findings, and I'm also working with my coordinators on trying to move SEL along as well. So, when we come back, this meeting is before our next board meeting, so I'll have another update. And I know Second Step Kit was bought for the elementary schools, so that's really, the coordinators and I are trying to put together our survey that we'd like to see elementary staff take, and really get their view on Second Step, if that would be like our universal model to use, and then, like, say, like, a Tier 1 support, and then, social worker schools, like, have that Tier 2 and Tier 3.
Jen, can you elaborate on the Second Step a little bit?
Sure, so it's a program that really works on, like, that social appropriateness, the anxiety, behavioral appropriateness to help our students, and we really focus, like, last year, it was piloted in different grades, so this year, we bought a kit for every grade level at the elementary school. So, we really focus in on our social workers, providing whole-class lessons to regular ed students, and then, really getting those regular ed teachers to buy in, because we really want them, you know, participating and taking over, so the common language is embedded into their everyday life. So, I think of that as like, our, you know, across the board, everyone does it. And Melinda and I, we went to a workshop a couple of weeks ago, of how we can get some SEL into the middle school, and then get it into the high school. And like Melinda said, we wrote the title for, for grant, to see if we can get some funding to help, who was Dylan's, Dylan's Wings, into the middle school, which is really, students are the facilitators, and work on that social-emotional learning, and the teachers are really just the facilitator. So, hopefully, we'll get some funding so we can start that at the middle school. So, I think this year is really.
Worth the cost of something like that.
Well, it wasn't.
It wasn't outrageous. You pay, kind of by tiers, to bring it in, so we could probably do something like that under $10,000, all said and done, and then you'd have to keep growing it every year. I mean, the hope really is with the social-emotional learning that it becomes something for everybody, and it's not just for students with an IEP, or students who are struggling. It really is to have a framework to go all along, starting when they're little, and build on it appropriately.
Do you know what we would have given, know about the grant?
I'm thinking with budget time.
Oh, we should know before that.
My personal thought is this is a great program for middle school.
Right, and.
That's kind of where I'm looking at.
Right, we should hear it before we're ready for the budget.
And I should say, like, I think of this as all students, not just special ed, like, you know, regular ed, special ed. So, I think this year is really just, like, gathering our information, and maybe if we get the grants, trying some new programs, and then, like, seeing if we could really implement a program for the district, starting in August. I just have a few other things, I think that's okay.
Sure.
So, I know we had the special ed survey, and I said, so, we had about 150 responses, and some highlights was that parents expressed, that they were able to express their concerns and thoughts at PPT meetings, which I thought was really good, and at other, like, team meetings or case conferences, that their child was accepted into the community within the school. And another highlight is that the staff are using assessments to determine eligibility, which I thought was really good, because, so they're using standard and curriculum assessments to determine if a student qualifies. And then, I have a couple special ed nights coming up. So, the preschool team. So, the preschool team and I are working on having a night where we talk about kindergarten transition. So, it's gonna be sometime in the winter, I would say January or February. And we'll, I'm gonna ask for volunteers at different elementary schools if they'd like to come, and, you know, talk to parents about, you know, just the transition of regular ed. Teacher would be great, an administrator, the ECAT team will be there, and then maybe like a school, a social worker or school site. As part of the surveys, one of the requests from parents is they'd like to know the difference between an IEP and a 504. So, I'm gonna provide.
Me, too.
So, I'm gonna provide that training in January or February, and then, I could always do, you know, here as well. And then, one other night, we're thinking is, Goldie and I met to talk about having a night for students who have a 504 or an IEP and inviting staff from a disability office from different colleges. So, we decided on March 3rd, and I actually, it's at 6 o'clock. I actually have two counselors at the high school helping me out. So, we, right now, we're just in the stages of trying to see who will say yes. But I will say by the December, we should have a definite number who, what colleges are gonna.
That's a great idea.
I think Central would probably be open, also because my son just went to one through Besby.
Okay.
At Central, they had it there, they had kids come to Central. But to have all the representatives come here would just be amazing.
We, so it's Anthony Mastriano and Doug Fraser are helping me out. And we talked about, like, Southern, Central, Yukon, Mitchell, there's another. Quinnipiac, Sacred Heart. And we wanted to keep, I can't remember the other one, but another trade school, because we, they said students, you know, like to go to the trade school, but it's not always advertised. So, we're gonna try to bring that in.
That's March 3rd, 6 o'clock, and where is that?
It's at the high school.
The high school.
And I'll have dates for the other nights in December. I'm just trying to figure out the.
I hope you consider a community college.
Oh, yes, Gateway's there. Okay, yes, it's there.
Well, no, it's just because some students, they know they may want to do something with an associate or they want to get a certification, like in culinary or whatever. I do want to ask you, I think it's a good idea to have transition for preschool going to kindergarten. But you know what? It's a big, I think in some ways, I think it's a bigger shock for parents to have their kids going from 5th to 6th grade, especially for the first time.
That's true. A good transition night for them.
Yeah.
That's a huge one.
Yeah.
All right.
And I think next year, that's when community colleges are free. Tuition is, well, yeah. So, that's an incentive.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the work that you're doing and Goldie for your help with all that, too.
Sure, that's awesome.
Director of Finance and Operations, before Pam is not present tonight. I believe her daughter's gonna wear a jacket, so we wish her daughter well. So, our next thing is public comments. Any public comments?
Hi, Ravisha from the North Haven Citizen. I did have one quick question in regards to your plans with diversifying the equity in higher-level classes. I understand that you're still, like, working on this, so if you don't have an answer, completely get it. But one of the points that you made that in order to get more kids into those classes, particularly from minority groups, was to have conversations with parents and the students to kind of encourage them to go in. What might those conversations look like at all? How do you think that you will be able to get these kids who aren't already in these classes incentivized? Do you have any plans this year?
I know that they're being held at the high school currently with the administration, and I do think it highlights a lot of what the course is. I think, I might be, I'm speaking from my own personal belief here, but when you hear Level 4, it's almost like it seems too difficult. But when you present it in, you know, friendly terms, and it's doable, and you just have to kind of get in there and take the course. I think, go ahead.
And we also have data from PSAT administrations and SAT that recommend students for higher-level courses, too. So, that's a great conversation point that counselors and math and English teachers can have with their students to say, you know, you're demonstrating strength here, and this might be a nice match in this particular class. And thinking about higher-level classes in non-core areas, too, are really important for really expanding kids' horizons and giving them opportunities.
Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight? Okay. Any future agenda items that we need to add? Then I need to have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the business manager's contract and to invite Mr. Sturck into executive session as well. Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Ed meeting at 8:35?
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Goldman.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.